Kevin?
Kevin here.
Great, thanks Kevin. Okay, we have a presentation today and it's on the restorative practice goals. And we have Director of Equity Joshua Okay, I did it. And Executive Director of Leadership and Student Services Sarah O'Donnell.
So to kick them off, I get the privilege of working with Sarah and the team as we work on Goals Two and Four. And so it's a privilege to be able to work with them in this, in their team. We also are joined by that, on that team with Dr. Jeanne Larber and Brian Shear. Tonight, we're just going to be hearing from the two of them as we talk about restorative practices. And really just want to focus on with restorative practices is that it is deeply rooted as all the work we do in our promise. In our promise. Restorative practice, which is really around establishing, retaining, and restoring effective relationships so that students can learn and be and feel safe, is allows us to more deeply know value and support our students. So as you listen tonight and as you go and visit a school next week, which we're really excited about, we're excited for you to see what restorative practice looks like. It's a term that gets used a lot and we really want to talk about what that means here in our district. So with that, I'm going to turn over to Josh and Sarah.
Great, thank you. What a pleasure to be here today. So we're excited to share with you the work that is happening this year. So as we look at our relationship to Goal Two, we're talking about the elimination of disparities in student access and success. And very specifically, we're looking on the right side of your screen in terms of students feeling safe at school. When we talk about restorative practices, very specifically, we're going to talk about affective statements and community circles this evening. And these affective statements and community circles really do support our efforts for creating that welcoming environment. And so those are the two areas that we've really launched into this year and we're excited to share with you about today as well. For also that connection to Goal Four, because we know that Goal Two and Goal Four, they go hand in hand. So as we talk about Goal Four, we're also talking about discipline data and really working on eliminating those disparities in terms of discipline. So, and we know that as we help students resolve conflict, understand behavior, and communicate better, we know that this is going to be just another way that we're supporting students in terms of behavior and hopefully affecting our discipline rates. All right.
One thing that we want to add, we know that on Goal Four, you see that's highlighted in gray. It says by 2026, there'll be a 10% increase in enrollment. So we're talking about academic acceleration piece. Although that is part of Goal Four, one of the things that we did as a leadership team was realize, you know what? This actually fits more aligned with Goal One and Goal Three, in which I was able to be part of this morning with councils in terms of the next steps of academic acceleration. So you won't see me really focus on, on that because that is now a big focus on, obviously, in the academic portion of our goals. All right, in terms of equity, every student, regardless of background or circumstances, assured of non prejudicial treatment and needs based resources to meet cognitive and behavioral expectation. As we talked about this last year, really, we're trying, what equity really means is trying to figure out the needs of our students and supporting them in all the resources that we have or providing them resources so that they can be successful in their academics and in their future.
All right, so in our presentation today, we have three outcomes in relation to Goal Two and Goal Four. And so as we know, as we look at each presentation that we do related to our strategic plan, we follow the work, first of all, of the work that we do with PLCs. And so this year, our work with restorative practices really focuses on where are we now and how do we know? Because we have made initial steps, even though this is this beginning year or first step year, we have made some really fabulous first steps that we're excited to share with you about as well. We're going to briefly identify how the four pillars are woven through the work. And you're going to see restorative practices woven beautifully through our four pillars. And then we're also going to really take a deep dive into those restorative practices, specifically affective statements and community circles. When you look at our pillars, obviously, the reminder of our four pillars, those are the foundations for our strategic plan. And so you'll see, for example, under Pillar A, Teaching and Learning, we're talking about the nurturing of positive relationships, creating that sense of belonging and making sure the kids feel welcome in their school. And then Pillar B, we're talking about reinforcing behavioral expectations, leading to Pillar C, really, the restorative practices and how it fits within our PBIS system. And then Pillar D, we're talking about Data Supportive Multi-Tiered System of Support Implementation. And what you'll see later on is how restorative practices adds to our menu of NTSSB supports. All right. So here's, here's a quote that, that we feel is really important. There are ways to ensure that students learn from the mistakes that they made. We are educators and our primary role is to teach. And this is such an important statement because it's not just about academics, it's also teaching behaviors. So getting to a wonderful slide that I'm sure we've seen before. So when a child does not know how to read, obviously, we teach. When a child doesn't know how to write, we teach. When they don't know how to multiply or do math, we teach. If they don't know how to behave, though, what do we do? Sometimes we forget that we need to teach. And so this is where the beautiful work that we do in our district, we really focus on how do we teach kids about behavioral expectations, about communicating needs, about resolving conflict. And so that's where this work of community circles and affective statements really is a part of teaching students to understand their needs and their behavior. All right, so in the words of the amazing Dr. Jeanne Larber, behavior is communication. And so we've heard that before in many of her wonderful presentations. And so when we talk about restorative practices, we really need to go back and just understand that foundation, that behavior is communication. And we know that students' actions and behaviors are often indicative of their underlying emotions and needs and thoughts. And so when students engage in certain behaviors, they're attempting to communicate something, even if they're not doing it verbally or if they're not doing it very well. So this concept emphasizes the importance of looking beyond the surface behavior and attempting to uncover, uncover the underlying message or purpose behind it. And so let's take a deeper dive into how we typically respond to behavior. So Ted Wachtel, there we go. So I want to introduce who Ted Wachtel is before we talk about this quote. He is the founder and former First President of the International Institute of Restorative Practices, IIRP. IIRP is one of the leading training organizations, research bodies, when it comes to restorative practices. And so this is why Ted Wachtel's work is so important. So he's a leading researcher, a leading author, and his, his name is found in, related to restorative practices extensively. And so his quote, "Human beings are happier, more cooperative, and productive, and more likely to make positive changes in their behavior when those in positions of authority do things with them rather than to them or for them." And so we'd like to stop for a moment. If you could read through that again, what word or phrase maybe stands out to you that is important related to supporting students and student behavior? So what word or phrase?
I think it's probably when positions of authority do things with them. I think that's probably most powerful for me.
What do you think? Any thoughts?
Yeah, I didn't tell you to do stuff with people, build relationships.
Yes.
You know, I I'm being hesitant. You know, I'm being reserved, let's just put that.
Sure, sure.
Some of the rest of that in that statement, I
Well, we're excited to teach you more tonight. Excited to teach you more. So I really do think that phrase of doing things with them. When we talk about teaching kids to use affective statements, when we're talking about using community circles, we are working with students to, to, to grow communication skills, conflict resolution skills. Hi Erin, welcome, it's all good.
Anyway, there's Erin's seat, right? I mean, these are things that work not just with, think of not just our students, as we work with staff, as we work with community. No one likes to be acted upon.
Right.
We all prefer to be partners.
Yeah, there we go.
All right. So on the next slide, we're going to go back to that first question in PLC. Like, what do we need to know and be able to do in terms of restorative practice? The very first thing obviously is, okay, what is restorative practices, right? How do we in Center of Boundaries School District define restorative practices? And just going off of what Sarah was talking about in terms of Ted Wachtel, we follow the International Institute of Restorative Practices definition, which is which is processes that proactively build healthy relationships and a sense of community to prevent and address conflict and wrongdoing. So when we're looking at this, when we look at this definition, one of the key words that I want you to focus on is healthy relationships because that's what we really focused on in this first year of implementation. So that's what restorative practice is. So what, what, what it's not, so what restorative practice is not? Now, restorative practices does not replace, eliminate, or minimizes consequences. It does not, it's not a response to just conflict only. And you can tell by the definition that we use because it's about building relationships and community. That's the focus. It's not punitive. It's not about placing blame. And it's not a quick fix. It's also not a strategy where it's a one size fits all, right? All solution. And it does not replace both professional support and the one that I want to talk about is that it does not ignore accountability. And in fact, it actually enhances accountability because what restorative practice does is it allows people to reflect on the actions that they've done and really think about the impact it actually had on students. Now, when you have that reflection piece for someone that did something wrong, right? It may feel punitive, but that's what cognitive metacognition does to you, right? You're thinking about what you're doing and sometimes you feel ashamed, like, wow, I actually did that. And it doesn't feel good, but what that actually does, it sets up that growth mindset for students and just individuals and adults in general. And so that's what restorative practice is now. Now, there are five fundamental principles of restorative practices, right? So we have this understanding of what restorative practice is. Now, what are the components of it? Now, according to SHOT Foundation of Public Education, they kind of broke it down for us. Now, there are five, but the one thing, again, like I said, is we want to focus on what is highlighted in red. Build healthy relationships between educators and students. We know for a fact, and in fact, when we discussed this in our restorative practice design team, there's no way we can address all of those components in one single year when restorative practices are new for a lot of our teachers, right? And a lot of our educators. So we know that we should just focus on one. And this year, for the implementation, healthy relationship was the one that was chosen. And here's the reason why. So going through research, right? Remember, we always do things for a reason. According to Child Mindset Institute, when you build positive relationships, we know that there's positive interaction, right? We know when positive relationships are built, we know that it creates a safe learning space in classrooms. It also builds new pathways for learning. And it also, positive relationships also improve student behavior. So we know this to be true as we know that students learn when they have that relationship built with their teacher. Now, with that being said, so I want to kind of move us from this big conceptual understanding of restorative practice and actually go into action. So, okay, so what does it actually look like then? Well, restore, there are multiple restorative practice strategies and they fall on the continuum though. So here is what you see, a restorative practice continuum. So those are strategies that are on the bottom. And on the left, yeah. On the left side, what you see is that informal strategies. You have that affective statements, affective questions, those questions like, how are you feeling? Like, how does that make you feel, right? Really trying to get the root of and understanding of the student. To going semi-formal, which is small impromptu conversations where it's educators say, hey, can you come with me really quick? I, I just noticed something was a little off. Can you tell me what's going on, right? And a lot of our teachers already do this. They do this consistently. We, as you know, if you're a parent, we do this, even as individuals, as adults, we do this already. But the reason why we're calling it out is because we need to be more intentional about it. And so with that being said, sorry, our focus, like I said before, our focus is on healthy relationship. So where in this restorative practice continuum is, is the best strategy for, for building healthy relationships? And it is circles. You can see circles all the way towards the formal section, but it could be semi, we call it like semi-formal, it can be formal. So circles is a restorative practice strategy that we will use to enhance building relationships with students. Now, real quick on circles, this is what I want to talk about really. Circles are highly structured and intentional space designed to promote connection, understanding, and dialogue in a group. Circle is a powerful tool for that basic community function of working out how we are going to be together, which includes building relationships, establishing norms, and working through differences. So because there's a lot, I feel like we're throwing at you all. Things that we, I would like for you to get out of this is that with restorative practices, we're focusing on building relationships and we're doing it through circles. That's what we're doing. I want to call attention to the fact that restorative practice is in alignment with our MTSS system. And as you can see, when we're focusing on circles and you see on the bottom, you see community circles and you see content circles, because we know that circles are good for everyone. So so where are we now, now that we have implemented it? With that being said, I would, can we pass to what I have what we have in front of you right now is something that was created before summer break, actually, after spring break, really, which is called Restorative Practice Design Plan, Practice Professional Learning Plan. Now, this is our roadmap to how we implement restorative practices district wide. So
You got it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there you go. So here's basically the summary of the plan. When you turn the page, it talks, we have the Theory of Action, right? Which is basically the intended to support the development of foundational skills of restorative practice. So it's that if then what statement? So if we focus on restorative practices, then these are the outcomes from our students, right? And then if you turn to page three, I believe, the why restorative practices, we know that builds positive relationships. We know that there's research in building empathy, reduce repeat offenses, improves student behavior, and builds conflict resolution skills. And then with number three, if you look on page four and five, you see that there's the restorative practices levels for professional development. So there are four different pathways and we'll get into those four, or those pathways in a little bit, but I just want you to know that there are four different pathways that buildings can take to help implement restorative practices specifically for their building. Because what, one thing that we do know is that every building is at, there are different levels. And then last but not least, in that last page, you have these tiered restorative practice strategies just for educators' references. So if they want to go ahead and do a little bit more, they can refer to that and see what strategy would best fit whatever they're trying to implement or address. All right, so like I said, we're going to go back to that restorative practice professional learning plan. One thing that we had done last year before the end of the year is that we had building principals and leaders assess their building's knowledge and readiness to implement restorative practices, right? And so once they took that assessment, then whatever score they have, they can elect which pathway to follow based on knowledge and readiness of their school and their community. So on the next slide, the assessment. So this year, we obviously, right, with capacity and the introduction of restorative practices, we only offered Pathway One and Two. However, what was on the assessment? The assessment was foundational training on restorative practice. How many teachers actually had foundational training? Because we've had many teachers come from different districts who are already part of restorative practice, who have training, right, restorative practices. Community content circles, restorative conversations, youth-led circles, peer-led conferences, and facilitating impromptu conferences. So when building principals assessed where they were at, the outcome was this. These were the results. Thirteen schools elected to start with Pathway One, and then three schools elected to start with Pathway Two. So, yeah, and you know, to my surprise, there were some schools too in building principals, like, you know what? I know that there's a lot of teachers that are doing this work and I know that it's growing. However, I really want all of us to be on the same page. So we're going to start with Pathway One. Yeah. And so, so we said, okay, so this then provided me an opportunity to figure out, all right. So during the August professional development days, I know then that one day is going to be dedicated for Pathway One and one day is going to be dedicated for Pathway Two. So I did, I helped facilitate the train the trainer session. So on one day, I had all the building leaders, learning leads, build equity leads, principals, and some other staff members, they came to the train and train session for Pathway One and the next day was for Pathway Two. Then they turned around, went back, and they modified their, the professional development plan to fit their needs. And then when they had their staff August PD, PD days, they then trained their staff on Pathway One and Pathway Two. So what did that really look like? What's the summary of that? Well, the pathways were foundations of restorative practice. So both Pathways One and Two did that, so we're all on the same page. Community circles, Pathways One and Two leaders did that. And those buildings in Pathway One, they focused mostly on those, community circles and foundations. Those are Pathway Two, then had kind of an extension and how, and did learn a little bit about how to have youth-led circles, where it's not now the teacher, it's the students leading the way, which we know, right, is which is powerful. On that rubric sheet, the, sorry, the teacher rubric, where it's like you're meeting, exceeding.
Oh, it's distinguished.
We know that when students are leading work, that is a distinguished work. So that's what I want to say. So what does it look like? So here's community circles in action. I have three pictures for you all to kind of share.
So these actually students or these community people?
These are students. So these are students, yeah. So here is an advisory class at Mountain View Middle School, where this is the first day that they are doing community circles. And so for a lot of them, this is new. And so they're setting out the foundation. But I want to give you all a picture of what that might look like in a classroom now. Okay. And then there are different variations of types of circles. So in that circle, you saw a circle with the teacher, with the students, right? And you didn't see any barriers because part of being in a circle is making sure there are no barriers so that everyone has an equal, equal voice and we're all on an equal playing field, right? It does something to that mind shift, like, oh, I'm exposed, I'm here, this is what I am, this is who I am. Now, there's also variations, as you can see in this same Mountain View Middle School, there's one where some circles also call for, for a focus piece in the middle so that students who are still a little reserved and don't want to make that eye contact, they can just focus on that middle section as people are doing circles.
And so the teacher's holding that?
Yes.
Yeah, she's explaining what that is and so she'll put it on the table and that way students can just look at that and speak. That way they're still participating, even though it might be, they might be a little more shy.
And here's one, this one was sent by, sent by Wade, Assistant Principal at Victor Falls Elementary School. He went into one of the classrooms to kind of observe and then he saw a teacher, the teacher and the student working independently. And what he saw on the right, in the front of the classroom, was a student-led circle, a youth-led circle. And so you can't really see it right now, but like he was telling me that they were in a circle with one of the student leaders in there, leading the circle while the teacher was able to work one-on-one with another student. And Victor Falls is one of our, is one of those schools that are in Pathway Two, where youth-led circles was their goal. And so that's an example there as well. All right, so in August, teachers, buildings, leaders, they learned about circles, right? And restorative practice circles. Now, we know that in October, they have, they continue on with their professional development on restorative practices in, in October. So there is this month of, I want to capture the feel of how restorative practice is going, or circles at least, is going district-wide. So we took that opportunity to ask, to give a survey out to teachers. And so on October 13th, the staff started the day with the, with the survey on restorative practices. And in this, what I want to share is that the focus on circles, the circle graph shows us that out of the 641 responses, majority were teachers and the next highest group was parent educators. See that right there? So yeah. Then on the next one, how many circles have you facilitated since the start of the school year? Remember, this is data taken from September to October. So really, they only had a month. But what I want you to focus on is that over 81% of staff have facilitated one or more circles. And one celebration that I would like to share is that 37% of staff have used circles five or more times in their classrooms. So what about the effectiveness of circles, right? And so on, so this question was asked, on a scale of one to four, how would you rate the overall effectiveness of community circles in promoting a positive classroom environment? And so when you focus on the yellow and green, which is effective and very effective, it shows that 60% overall had a positive effect of, in the classroom environment, 60%. Again, talking about the impact, on a scale of one to five, please indicate the extent to which you observe changes in student behavior and their willingness to engage in classroom-led activities since implementing community circles. Let me read that again, sorry. Please indicate the extent to which you have observed changes in student behavior and their willingness to engage in classroom-led activities since implementing circles. All right, so we're talking about teacher perception, right? Or any staff member's perception. I want us to focus on the, the big nugget here, as we talked about in our team, was focusing on the gold, green, and purple. So between September 5th and October 13th, 45% of staff have seen moderate to significant to transformational improvement in student behavior and students willing to engage in classroom-led activity. This is important because staff are using circles to not only address student behavior. This is important because staff are using circles to not only address student behavior and classroom culture. But also using circles to support academics in the classroom. Now, if you take a look at the fourteen uh responses for transformational improvement, I like to paint this picture. Let's say those fourteen are actually teachers, right? And let's say those teachers have an average of twenty students in their class. Now, I know that's probably less, right, uh than what is normal, but let's just say twenty. But fourteen times twenty, right, that's two hundred and eighty students. Two hundred and eighty students has experienced transformational improvement in uh using circles. So that's, that's what I kinda like to talk about, but then when you add in the rest, the gold and green. You're just talking about multiple students having that experience, and so.
And those fourteen teachers were secondary teachers? Right, and they see a hundred and fifty-two students a day?
Mm-hmm.
It grows tremendously. And so I just think that idea, just point out that impact.
Is that done like at their first period, or how do they do that in the middle schools and high schools?
Yeah, so there's some schools that will do it in their advisory. Uh, some uh elementary schools will do it the first start of the beginning of uh the day. Um, and then there are other schools that will take, oh, hey, you know how we did this in advisory? Or we're gonna use this in our uh for to discuss this content piece. So there are different variations and which circles are utilized, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Now, there's a lot to celebrate about the first implementation of restorative practices. But what we know is that we can always grow. So one of the survey questions that we asked is. Which of the following challenges, if any, have you encountered while implementing community circles? Select all that applies. So here were the biggest ones, like lack of student participation. We still see that there's a lack of student participation in circles, right? Student disruptions. And for some uh spaces that we have here, physical space, right? Um, and so we know as a team that now we have to focus on how do we help students. Um, uh teachers and staff members engage students in circles. We know it's not gonna be easy, right? So that's what we're kinda focusing on. We're both focusing on how we can support staff in time, space, and how to respond to students who do not engage. So that when we start next school year, s- uh staff are given tools and resources to address those concerns that we see here. Oh, oh, I also wanna add that, just last night, we actually, or two nights ago, I believe. Um, we had the building equity leaders uh meeting, and uh these are some of the things that we also talked about. Now, um, with that survey, we also asked, you know, are there any celebrations? And so here are four celebrations that I want to bring to our attention. Um, and these are from our staff members. Many of the students involved in the circle liked the entire process and gained a small sense of control. And felt important and heard when they had a chance to speak. The fact that students were seen and heard, right, that's what teachers saw. I have students who are multilingual, and they are absorbing their peers' answers and try to answer in English. We are seeing the effect of how this can support our multilingual students. There's, I was skeptical, but have found them to be one full way for students to engage in conversation in a relaxed environment. Here we have an educator who realized, wait, this strategy actually works when you set the environment right and uh students are engaging in conversation. And then the last one is, these have been great for lab conclusion wrap-up, which helps the students write more effective conclusions. We're not seeing this uh circles just uh solely on building relationships. What we're seeing now is this trans- uh transformation into um or transition into content, right? Students are now familiar with how circles are going, and teachers are using that as an advantage to support their learning. With that being said, I only showed you four, but in fact, there are four hundred and twenty-two responses. And they could only respond once. So what I'm saying is, there are four hundred and twenty-two staff members district-wide that had a celebration.
So you have one package per person?
Yeah, one package per person. And so.
You guys aren't all getting the same.
Yeah, so.
Okay, we're just getting a portion, yeah.
Game portion of it. And so just let's take the next uh two, three minutes. Uh, what I would like for you to do is kind of peruse um the uh the celebrations. And really try to find uh one or two celebrations that stand out to you or themes that you might see. Um, I know that some of you are still probably reading, that's okay, but if we wanna just go ahead and popcorn. And Kevin, I believe you also have this on PDF via email, is that correct?
Yes, I do, looking at it right now.
So please feel free to popcorn out, uh kind of share one or two things that really stands out to you in terms of the celebrations of um circles.
This one jumped out at me. Many students involved in the circle liked the entire process and gained a sense of control and felt important. When heard, um, and heard when they had a chance to speak. And getting to know the kids on a deeper level as a human, and then they get to see me as a human, not just a teacher.
Josh, what I love about this is there's an overarching theme in here. Post-pandemic, I think we were really concerned that kids weren't going to be social with each other, build relationships, learn to connect. And clearly, through some of these celebrations, students can relate to each other and make connections. I mean, they're having conversations that aren't on their cell phones.
Right.
They're, they're really learning how to build authentic connection and and have conversations with each other and get to know each other. Increase their vulnerability, which was, and trust. It's all of those things that we were really worried about during the pandemic and post-pandemic, so.
I think there was a one comment that really specified that as well.
Oh, really?
Yeah, they said, well, like, this is what students see. I know it said it was hard for students to engage with each other, but since these circles, they've actually are practicing it now.
Couple that I have is um extremely quiet slash shy students are now participating willingly, even if they are just quiet. Other students are listening intently. A student with behavioral challenges is now participating from his desk. Another one was my seventh grade students, uh while initially reluctant, are now one hundred percent participation in our community circle. So, I guess it's probably different for every classroom, but um I think that was a good one. And actually initially, the one of the first ones I really liked was, I feel like having the students participating in the solutions is giving them the power. Given as I have.
Well, they're all positive statements in here. Uh, you know, one of the things that even where Deb highlighted on the last comment. I've got a comment here, and I'll give the number, it was one sixty-two, so. Tells you how many uh statements are here. You know, students were very hesitant to participate in the beginning, but I have seen some improvement in their willingness to share. I would be one of those very hesitant students.
Yeah.
Um, however, what I've seen so far does not strike me, even you had brought it up, uh Josh, that most of our teachers are already doing this uh work. They've been doing this work, they called it something different, now all of a sudden we're calling it this. And so that creates hesitation, uh and that also creates hesitation on our staff when we go back to that statement at the very beginning. Where from Ted, uh, I'm trying to pronounce his last name. Where, you know, human beings are happier, more cooperative and productive, and more likely to make positive changes in their behavior. When those in positions of authority do things with them rather uh rather than to them. And so the hesitancy probably on teaching staff and students is at first, it feels like it's being done to them. Until they realize, wait a minute, I do this at church, I've done this before in the past at birthday parties. And so it, it, it doesn't take them long, I think, to warm up.
Yeah.
Because it's a, a natural uh thing people have been doing for years. We're just now calling it something uh that raised people's suspicions or concerns. I'll leave it at that, but there are lots of positive statements in here. And uh, uh as you can tell, I'm.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm one of those types of people that are very hesitant at first, so.
Kevin, did you have any one that jumped out at you?
Well, I think a lot of the good ones were spoken about already, so I'll just say I, I kinda got a general sense of belonging. And when engaging with your peers, uh learning more about them, learning things that you didn't know. Um, which brings people closer and and creates a better understanding.
If I can, one that I would share, it was two eighty-seven, which highlights the importance of the strategy. Although sharing is something, as you pointed out, Paul, that we've done since the beginning of time. This structured way of doing that, where they have a talking piece and they're all looking at each other in a way of engaging in this conversation. Building relationships first so that they can then talk about content. Says all students have a voice, not just the ones who constantly use their, use their voice anyway, but the quiet ones find their voice as well. And I thought that was really powerful because it talked about the importance of the strategy. Which moves it a step away from just general discussion. It's, we're using the strategy, we have a talking piece, we practice it with community connection, so that when we apply it to content. Not just the same ten kids are talking all the time.
It feels safer.
Alright, well, thank you for that. And so I think we also have a, it's a five-minute video, but we're not gonna do that. We're gonna just start at four fifty-one, uh that kinda um shares uh student voice. And I wanna just give a big shout out to, I believe it's Laura Henning-Nimitz, uh this is her class. And uh she created this uh video um of her students speaking about restorative practices to share with her s- staff members on that October thirteenth date. So students were still getting to learn what restorative practice is, and this is what some of them had to say.
I like community circles because it gives us a student, you know, you can talk to other people, how to go up there. And I think it has like a positive impact, because we get to like learn to be better friends with people.
I like community circles because it tells you about other people, and it's easier than it turns to be.
Go ahead.
Oh, I go first.
Um, I like community circles because it brings the class together. And it's very helpful and really keeps like what people lives and who they are.
Yeah, kind of what you said, like, I'd like, it just, it makes you feel very like, like connected with like the whole entire like class. And it just kind of gives me a little peace of like how people are, like how they're feeling that day was starting to make sense.
So, remember, this was intentional, right? Because like I said in the beginning, our focus was building healthy relationships. And looking at the restorative practice strategies, we said circles are the best way to do that. And that's what we spread, and that's what we heard from our students, they felt connected. And Kevin, you talked about belonging, that they felt belong. And when you have that type of environment, that supports a great learning environment for all.
Yeah, Josh, they also mentioned, and Kevin, you said this um beautifully, that they learn things about each other. Say that again, because we learn things about each other.
Yeah.
And it um builds a tighter connection, and they, you know, in middle school especially where it can feel very isolating.
Yeah.
To have someone that they can identify with or they know is a safe place to go.
Yeah, yeah.
And when we talk about our goals, about goal two, and every student feeling safe.
Yeah.
Right, and a sense of belonging. It can be really easy, um as a former middle school teacher, to have kids who hide in a classroom. Right, and and they want to hide, right? And this is a way to help gently pull you into the community and say, you're not alone. You're one of us, you belong here.
Yeah.
And we're interested in you, and as we built that partnership and that relationship. Now we can capitalize and leverage those relationships as we learn together, right? And if there is harm in the community, we have a place where we can address that harm and fix it. So this is a lot of groundwork, it's not earth-shattering stuff. Right? But it is intentional, and there's a reason why, you know, we call it circles, because there's a, so you can't be the kid who's hiding in the back row. Right? Uh, or third seat from the left, you know, wherever they hide.
And that, thank you for talking about how circles are actually the groundwork of what's coming next. So in October, uh after they had taken that survey, uh we moved in a little bit more. Because we know that in the beginning of the school year, right, we're building relationships, we're trying to uh have these healthy relationships with students. And and then we know that as we get through the school year, they get a little bit comfortable with each other, and there's some behaviors that uh needs to be addressed. Right, so if we build that foundation, how do we build, um, and they're familiar with that circle structure. How do we enhance that circle structure to restore um our uh relationships? And that's what it's all about. So, um, with that being said, we pass out the, we pass out um these restorative question cards. For every single one of our uh staff members in the buildings. And with these restorative um practice cards, uh these are our foundational uh questions for when harm has been done. Right, between us, two students, multiple students. Uh, and so this kind of gives a guide for the teacher or staff member to kind of really get through. Uh, get through the, the root and cause of the problem. Because what we want to do, right, is we want to be able to change the behavior. But in order to change that behavior, we have to help students reflect on what they actually did, right? Um, and so here's a, here are some of the questions that IRP has given us that we use, so. Uh, sorry. And then this following August is when we move into the next um fundamental uh principles of restorative practice. And that's how do we restore relationships when harm is done, so.
And these are which, these are the affective questions.
Yes, yes.
That we're talking about, right? Again, giving teachers a tool, I happened to be at Lakewood the day that um Laura Henning-Nimitz did her training line with Joy Lawson. And they really talked about this as a useful tool. You're in that moment and you wanna have that conversation with a student, because I can remove a student from a classroom. But what do I do to make sure that they come back successful, ready to learn?
Yeah.
And so these questions are providing teachers with simple and powerful tools to have questions to go to when you're in that stress of the moment. And you're thinking, okay, what do I do? Oh, okay, I can just ask you some of these simple questions, simple reminders. That's, okay, let's have these questions, now you're ready to come back in, ready to learn. How do we come back into the rela- uh back into the classroom relationship?
Next slide is this one. So, next week, uh you all obviously are invited to see Restorative Practices in Action. Uh, we will be going to Maple Lawn Elementary School, and we'll be seeing two different teachers uh facilitate circles. Um, the first one is uh primary uh with primary students, and the second uh teacher is with in uh intermediate students. Um, and then with that, uh you will also be joined with us students, and they have a student panel. In which we have fifth graders that are restorative practice leaders. And so what they do is they actually work with students to kind of help them through any situation that they might be going through. And so, or they, they walk with the students, kind of calm them down during recess, so they have, they have the experience. And they're still learning too, because this is their first time implementing. So they have, they have the experience, and they're still learning too, because this is their first time implementing it. So they're just gonna tell you what it's like and some of the challenges maybe, and also the success that they're having.
Great leadership skills.
Yes, most definitely. Other than that, that concludes our presentation. I do just wanna give a shout out to the whole instructional service team that has really helped us. David, Sarah, Junie, you know, Kell and Steve, right? This wouldn't have been done, this implementation process and, and I guess guide and pathway wouldn't have been done without this team. I'm just really here to kind of help guide and make sure that it's on the right path, so.
So many questions.
On the slide that said, how many circles have you facilitated since the start of school year? I thought I heard you say eighty-one percent of the staff have implemented them. But when I had the percentages, I don't, I don't see that, so I'm wondering if I'm looking at it wrong and.
I could speak to that, so that math comes, when you have, take out the blue section that says not applicable, that white blue. So it said eighty-one percent of the remaining staff have implemented circles. So we took that, we took that twenty percent out, because those are staff whose role would not lend to doing a circle. So when he says that eighty-one percent, it's eighty-one percent of the rest of the circle.
I'm so glad I hurried down here, I'm sorry I was late, but this is just such good work. It makes our whole community better, right, with these skills.
Yeah.
It'll be interesting to follow it from year to year to see, especially the fifth graders who are now the leaders.
Right.
And how, what happens to them if they continue on, and I'm sure they will, but it'd be really interesting to watch.
Yeah.
Good. Any other questions?
Kudos for you. I like the fact that you put in there on the survey that, you know, lack of student participation. So it was feedback for you guys to really even reflect and evaluate, how can you better implement this? I appreciated seeing that, I thought it was transparent. We didn't get the whole, this is the best thing since the print, and everybody loves it. I didn't feel that during this process, during the study session, and I appreciated the transparency, thank you.
So Josh, this is a Herculean effort.
Yes.
I mean, you're, you're not just turning the whale, you're like, this changes culture. I mean, you change culture through language and conversation, and that's what you're promoting. And this whole presentation, I mean, really, I whispered it to Deb, but a lot of adults could benefit from this. And my mind starts wondering, you know, how do you, you know, how do staff use this to restore relationships? How do community groups? And it fits so nicely in with the policies that this board is passing that truly do value and support all of our kids. So the whole, the whole package is well-done, but it is definitely Herculean for sure. So well done in the pacing, you're not going too fast, you're not going too slow, you're giving people like a differentiated approach, like what are you ready for?
Yeah. And I will say, that was going back and forth with everyone, because, you know.
Oh, I heard.
I was like, let's go, and it's like, whoa. Okay, I get it, I was like, okay. Yeah, I know, I know. But, yeah, and to go slow, go slow to go fast, and just after, you know, doing this data piece, just seeing that in action, like, whoa, oh, okay, I see. And see where we actually need to actually improve, because if we just keep going and not seeing where we improve, then the finality of circles, it's not gonna be as powerful, you know?
I think if you keep connecting it back to what people are already doing and what they're used to doing and what they've been doing for years, I think they're more accepting of it, just even going through it. I'm more accepting of it, I still have my reservations. But it feels more like you're coming alongside, you know, bringing people up to speed so that we're all, you know, this is, these are great questions. But, yeah, people feel, and that's students and staff, if they feel like stuff is being poured down their throat and all they gotta do is open up a little wider, you give resistance. And so it's working on the positives that are already existing in the district, and you've done a good job on that, thank you.
So several years ago, several years ago, and I don't know if anybody was able to participate in this, the challenge dates at Center High School.
Do you remember that?
Okay, so I was there, and it was kind of, I would say it was very emotional, and it was a great mix of community people, staff, and students. And they weren't all targeted specifically because they needed to be there, it was very random. And I gotta tell you that I, I had to go out to dinner with my husband afterwards, and I think I was crying for two hours, because you saw this, this kind of strip, striking down of students who were hurting, and you had no idea. And I really was able to connect with my little group, and I mean, I made them cookies once a month and bought them in there. But it was really interesting to follow, but it dropped off. You know, it was an expensive program to have, Rotary always paid for it, but it was seven or eight thousand, but that was also maybe twenty years ago. Yeah, it seems, yeah, it seems very similar. And I think what I like about this is that you're starting really young, and you're getting all that support within that circle. Sometimes it'll, it'll be a small circle, and sometimes it'll be a large one. But bringing the staff in there and getting to know the students and their needs and their circumstances, I think it's, it's just a bonus for everybody, so thank you. Okay, next thing is for discussion, round discussion, just like. Kevin?
I'm all good, thank you, appreciate the presentation, great work, love everything about it.